This conference will now be recorded.
All right, it's May 19th, 2020 at 7:30 PM. Going to call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present Doug Roberts, Joe Hall, Bob Shabbitt, Lori Semperban, and myself. First item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing. Z-20-30 Special Permit for Home Occupation. Section 11.01.02, 54 Baxter Road. Owner, applicant Allison LaPrada. Go ahead, Allison.
Hi, everybody. I'm applying for a home occupation because I'm just starting a mobile pet grooming business. I have a van and there's going to be no business done here at the house, but I need to park the van in my driveway. And it does have my business name and logo on it. So I was asked from Section 11.01.01, the home occupation, I don't meet the regular requirements. So I'm asking for a special permit from Section 11.01.01.02 because my van will be displaying details.
I'm just flipping to the zoning book 11.01.
There's a lot of home occupations that we can approve as staff, but if they don't meet the specific requirements, they have to come to you for a special permit.
Is it the 11.01.01.02 shall have no outside storage, no outside, no sign or other evidence of the existing of the home occupation located outside or visible or detectable from outside the dwelling? Is that the issue, Mike?
I think that, here, let me pull it up and I'll read it out because we have that in the new section of the regs. So some of the pages have changed into page numbers. So it's Section 11.01.02. Okay. Yeah, so that's the specific, that section under Section 11 is the criteria for home occupations by special permit. Because she doesn't meet the criteria under 11.01, which means staff can approve. So therefore she's got to come to you guys. And so she doesn't have to deal with the parking spaces because she's not had anybody coming to the house. So this is basically, like I said, because of the vehicle. And let me just see.
So Mike, how does this compare against a guy that's a plumber or an electrician? That may not have a shop. He's got his house and the van there with the name of his, say he's an E1. He's a one man show. He's got the name on the van. How's that compared to this?
It's, yeah, basically would be the same thing. If someone came and said, listen, I have a large van that I have signage on and I run my business out of my house because I'm a one man crew. They would come before you for the same thing. The mailing address would be their house. But they, that doesn't, I can't approve that as staff. It has to come to you guys for approval. And, yeah.
Any questions from the commission?
From me? Not that I know.
I'm asking the commission if they have any questions for you.
No, not really. It seems like it's pretty straightforward.
It does.
I agree.
Yeah, none from me, Walter.
I agree.
I think this is very straightforward.
It seems like maybe businesses like these should be able to approve by staff.
I agree. We'd have to change the regulation though, Doug, in order to do that.
I know.
Maybe something for a later date to consider.
Yeah, market, you know, market is one of those regulations that should be tweaked maybe in the future.
I know this doesn't happen very often. I can't recall many times we've sat here over at least the last probably eight, nine years and had similar.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there are, the vast majority of businesses in town, and I know the number because we're looking at it for other things. But there are like 250 people that claim to have some type of business in town. The vast majority are through home occupations. We renew them every year. And we send out dozens of renewal letters, but we have construction companies. We have septic companies with equipment all operating under home occupations. If you remember, I think his name was Ted Rubel. He came before you for zone change. He went back from commercial to residential because the home occupation regs are much more lenient than the, and allow you to live and work in the same place, but our commercial regs don't. So it's, I think because of the rural nature of the town, a lot of towns have it set up this way. So that's something we can certainly look at, changing that.
All right. Well, we're not going to change that tonight, but I personally don't see anything complex about this. And if I heard the commission right, they don't either. So.
I think we should move, I think we should move forward.
Yeah, we can close this public hearing. Allison, do you have any further commentary or questions or anything?
Um, I just had a form that I needed signed from the town of Wellington in order to obtain my state licensing from the Board of Agriculture in order to be able to get my license for grooming. Is that something I can get relatively soon? Because I know it's probably going to take a little while to get that set up through them as well. I had already emailed, I think, to Ashley the form that I needed and filled out everything that I could fill out.
Yeah, so, you know, if you get a decision tonight, if they approve it, then we can sign it and you can coordinate with us at the office to pick it up. So I see Ralph had his hand up.
I know, I'm going to, and I see Andy's joining us as well. And this is a public hearing and Ralph is a member of the public, even though I'm looking at him on a computer screen here. Go ahead, Ralph.
Well, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to comment on home occupations because I have one. Essentially, mine is an invisible home occupation. I have an office in my basement. No clients come to me. I go to them. My work is basically all done on a computer. Quite frankly, if I didn't apply for a home occupation permit, no one would know the difference. But because of other requirements with respect to the business name, I had to, before I could register the business with the town, I had to make sure that all zoning requirements were met. Therefore, that's why I went forward with a home occupation. But with what Allison wants to do here, she does no work in her home, from what I gather, from what I've seen so far in this presentation. The only, the only problem or the only sticking point is the fact that she has a vehicle with a name on it. And I would ask the commission to consider how many vehicles are parked in driveways throughout the town that have a business name on them because that happens to be a company truck that they drive to and from work. And those folks don't have a home occupation permit. Why should this be a key factor in her having to go through this, these hurdles? Now, I have no problem with home occupations permits, obviously. But I think the regulations need to be a little flexible with respect to a home occupation that doesn't involve any work in the home. Where this person is on the road all the time. And the only problem is the fact that, number one, she may need to register the business and needs to meet zoning requirements. But there's, home occupation implies that work's done in the home. And I don't think that's going to be the case here. And I would support giving her the permit in a heartbeat.
Thanks for your input, Ralph. Doug, Mike, you want to weigh in on those thoughts?
Yeah, the only thing that you could do, some towns do this, is they basically create criteria for the external parts of the business. So they create thresholds for vehicles that come home. And if you have this type of vehicle, you don't need a permit. If you have this, you know, they, they look at just the, the physical exterior of what you might see from the road if you have a commercial vehicle. But yeah, we have people that run in, you know, if they tow for a living, they, you know, the state police expect that they respond within a certain timeframe. So the truck needs to be at home. People that do emergency response for like ServPro or Hazmat, they need trucks at home. So there's a lot of people that have to have a vehicle nearby. So, I mean, I know that some towns do it that way. But we can, we can look at that and try to make the reg a little more flexible.
All right. I don't think we're going to solve that piece of it tonight, but I think I'm not hearing any, any objections to this business or anything. Any other members of the public want to weigh in on this?
I see there's a couple of people here that are commissioners. So if you, they should be able to unmute themselves if they have something that they want to say.
Okay, I just want to make sure we give everyone a chance to, to say something if they want to.
I should also note while the public hearing is open, we did the abutters notifications because they can't get in to do the research. So we did that in the office and sent abutting notifications out. The sign was on the property. She picked that up. So all that was done per, per code.
Okay, and there were enough signs out, Mike?
Yeah, we, we printed them in-house and we set them all up and we had her pick them up and put them out.
Okay. All right, I'm going to, I'm going to move to close the, this public hearing, Z-20-30.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, public hearings closed. All right, item two. Public hearing PZ-20-1. Special Permit for Retail Trade. Section 5.04.01.02.19, 11 Phelps Way. Owner, BTV Realty of Wellington, applicant Katie Merrick. You hear Katie?
Yes, I am.
Hi, my name's Mike Bonanno. I'm an attorney. I represent the applicant. So obviously Katie's here and she can chime in at any point, but if it's okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So again, my name is Michael Bonanno, B-O-N-A-N-N-O. And I'm an attorney at Tavano McCune Bonanno in Glastonbury. And I represent the applicant. And as I said, Katie's with me tonight. She's one of the owners of the property along with Bill Valvo. Unfortunately, he's not able to make it tonight. He's actually working still. But Katie is also part of the operation of Lots and More, which is the proposed store that's going to go into the anchor store location within the plaza. So to give you just a little bit of general background and information, I'm sure you guys are familiar with the property. It's 11 Phelps Way as well as 15 Phelps Way, which the town actually has as two separate parcels. But we've discovered through the acquisition of the property and some additional work that they are, it is a single parcel for whatever that's worth to you. The site, so we are here for a special permit to operate a retail store. That we are in a DC or design commercial zone. It's an existing shopping plaza that's about half occupied. There's six tenants there now with room for about six or seven more tenants, which hopefully we will get that, that plaza fully occupied. The client purchased the property about six months ago as looking to get the property fully occupied so they can manage that. But also with a keen eye to putting a new store location there, which is Lots and More. So we uploaded some additional information onto the OpenGov portal yesterday, I believe. And that might not have made it into all of your packages. So I'd like that to be part of the record and I can, I can certainly read parts of that into the record. And with the assistance of your zoning agent, Mike, who's been very helpful, he can also pull, probably pull that up on screen if that's okay with you, Mike.
Yeah, what do you want to start with?
Well, I think it's, you know, it's, it's something I'm just going to, you know, mostly repeat the things that are within that application narrative. If with the chairperson parcel with your permission, it's up to you as to your preference and whether you want to pull those items up. And I can kind of summarize them or just you can, you know, read them by your leisure.
I think we should pull them up. I think it would be useful to see it if we can do it here.
Fantastic. So if we could start with the information about Lots and More, which is the special permit application narrative. Let's see, that should be known as the company narrative.
Yep.
Give me one second.
All right, fantastic. So this is just giving a little background information about the store that we are proposing to go into the site. Lots and More, if you're not familiar with them, they opened their first store in 2002. Their anchor store is in South Windsor. Had a store in Willimantic. That's no longer there, but they have expanded to East Hartford. They offer discount products at great prices. They sell general retail merchandise, but there is definitely a focus on garden supplies. They include perennials, annuals, nursery stock, garden-related accessories. And they also sell mulch, potting soil, pavers, and other agriculturally related products. All of the mulch and soils, et cetera, those are all bagged. So they're, those are not sold in bulk. In addition to garden supplies, though, they do sell some tools. They also have a related business that rents some equipment and machinery. And they have hardware, craft items, cleaning supplies, and other home center items. So that's really the background of Lots and More of what they are at the store. That's what we are proposing to put into the anchor store location within the Phelps Plaza. Mike, if you wouldn't mind, if we could move over to this document as the application narrative. That would be great.
Do you have any way to make this bigger? I can't really read this.
Yep.
Thanks to everybody for your patience. This is my first zoning hearing that we're doing virtually. But with Mike's assistance, it looks like it's working pretty well.
Is that any better?
Yes, thank you.
That's much better.
Right. So this is really kind of just mirroring what I was going to say in my presentation. But I think it might be a little easier for you guys to digest. So obviously we are here for a special permit. It's under Section 5.04.01.02.19, which deals with retail trade. As I told you, the application, it canvases both 11 and 15 Phelps Way. And that's important for the purpose that in addition to having the store at the anchor location, we are asking for permission to have an outdoor display for seasonal outdoor garden items. These are just seasonal. So if we're talking from spring to fall. And they are, as I mentioned, bagged mulch, bagged soil, and plants. We have a map, which was a new site plan that was developed by Gardner and Peter, which was included as part of your package. And that does show the property as one parcel. And it also lays out the existing buildings because we do have the shopping mall plaza, which is located on 11 Phelps Way. And then there is a second building on 15 Phelps Way. And the outdoor display area, which is located with, within that map or on that map, does kind of go on to that separate 15, what was known as 15 Phelps. So that's something that if you haven't viewed before, you could, and certainly we can pull up as part of this virtual meeting and talk about exactly where the, where everything is located. So as I mentioned, the property is in the DC zone, which the, the intent behind that zone, according to the regs, is for the creation of high quality, integrated commercial development that meets the shopping and service needs of the town with a diversity of uses. And that, that's what we have here. The client is certainly looking to fully occupy the plaza so that we are able to provide even more diverse uses. As I mentioned, there are currently six tenants. We've got a variety of uses already, including Dr. Dana Woods, which is a dentist. We've got a package store, Helen's Wine and Spirits, Wellington Pizza, too. Post Office, Elegant Edge Hair Salon, and Shawlin Kembo Marshall Art Studio as well. So those are existing tenants. We would, of course, like to have a Lots and More store located there, too. The location that we're looking for to put the store into is the anchor store. It incorporates approximately 8,000 square feet of indoor floor area. I did upload, which you do not have as part of your package, a sketch that the, one of the owners, Bill Valvo, put together, which is pretty accurate with regard to the layout of the floor, the interior floor layout. And we can certainly pull that up and go through that together if, if you wish. By way of plans, long-term plans for the plaza. Well, the short-term plan is to get in, to get the business in operation and to clean up the property. I don't know if you've noticed, there's been some minor cosmetic changes or at least improvements as far as what my client's been able to, to do so far. But they intend to make some improvements to the parking lot. We have to re-strike the parking lot. They need, they did bring in some new curbs. And they're going to seal the parking lot where appropriate as well. There's going to be a lot of cleaning up. There's been some deterioration of the property in the buildings over time. So they're going to make some cosmetic changes to that. They're going to clean up the fascia. They're painting, you know, touch-up spots where necessary. And there's also, they're going to be changing out the gutter. So these are kind of short-term plans that they intend to do. No long-term plans right now, at least with regard to structural changes to the exterior. I want to bring up a couple of other things by way of administrative points. Kind of jumping around a little bit, but I want to point out that the signs were installed on Saturday, May 9th. And the staff did assist with notifying the abutters. So that was done. We do feel that this property is, is really ripe for improvement. I understand that historically it's been a successful shopping plaza. And that's what the clients intend to bring it back to, that success and that usefulness. There is, there is a need for this, this retail store in the town, at least as far as what we can interpret. And we hope that you find that, that their reinvestment into the property, redevelopment of the property will be of service to the town. We do find that it is in concert with the plan of conservation and development as well. So we're certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have. I expect that there would be some, you know, questions as to the specifics. And that's why we've got Katie available too, but I'm certainly happy to take any questions at any time.
Yeah, I know the parking lot, I know the plaza isn't fully occupied. Do we have any concerns whatsoever about parking and so forth there? You know, a store that's nursery and so forth, certain times of the year it's pretty busy. Do we feel there's enough spaces and everything to handle that in addition to the other businesses?
So I do feel that there is.
Well, I think, I think that parking lot is.
Pardon me, I didn't mean to interrupt. If I may, I was going to make another, I was going to mention another improvement, which is connecting the upper and lower level parking lots by way of some stairs, too. That's, that's another improvement that the client intends to make. But it's based on the calculations that are contained, which you can see right now on the screen on the site map. I do believe that there's adequate parking, if not more, but that's just my opinion.
I know it used to be a grocery store quite a few years ago now, but.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think that most of that parking lot is pretty empty. The bank is not there anymore. When Phelps, Santilli's was there, you know, it was pretty busy. And I think the parking lot was able to handle that. And especially if there's a walkway through, you know, there is overflow parking up above. That is quite a big lot for, again, what's not used very much up above.
Okay, any, any further questions from the commission on this?
Bob Shabbitt, I was just curious. I noticed last week or the week before has some small equipment with assigned equipment for rent. Is that, what's your plan insofar as placement of your rental equipment? If you could address that, please?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. Actually, that was unintentional advertising. So those pieces of equipment, I believe, were labeled with Lots and More decals. And they were parked there for the future work that they need to do. That wasn't actually a subtle way of advertising. Although the, there is a related business that, that we would, they, they would ask permission to be able to rent some items and some equipment. Certainly, we wouldn't be broadcasting it out in that parking lot in that fashion. That truly was. And I did clear this because I was expecting that comment because when I drove by, I saw those as well. And I asked the client and I said, oh, no, those were literally just parked there in anticipation of doing future work. That wasn't intended to advertise.
Yeah, a little more subtlety would have been nice.
Agreed, understood, yeah.
Mike, can you scroll the map a little bit so we can see more of the building? Okay, thank you.
So how many total parking spaces will there be after all the work is done?
We are going to stay consistent with the amount of parking spaces that are there right now. We don't intend to make any additional parking spaces or eliminate any parking spaces. As I believe, we have 158 spaces in accordance with the site plan map.
Okay, thank you.
One thing that I want to point out, I, because I worked with Mark Peterson on the site plan, and I'm going to scroll back down for a hot second. If you look, all of these tenant spaces that are vacant, tenant 14, 13, 10, 8, 7, we're still, we're still including them in the count. So we're not giving them a zero as it, because they're vacant. We're, we're looking at them as if they're occupied so that as they fill these tenant spaces, they don't run into parking issues. So they're, they're required to have 150. They're providing 158, and that includes 100% occupancy, so they don't run into any future issues.
It's really hard to see just because it's so small, but.
Okay, hold on, let me, I can make it bigger. I, I'm working on a really large monitor, so I can't tell how it looks to you guys. But let me see if I can zoom it in.
Yeah, just that little chart. Yeah, I can see it somewhat.
All right, that's good. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is Andy. Could you, can you expand, Mr. Bonanno, on the outside storage? Just, just tell us on how that works. You mentioned that the building, you know, the garden supplies and stuff are stored out there. Looking at Phelps's Plaza, if I'm looking at like Google Maps, where, where do you envision that being placed?
Yes. So we've actually, on that site map, too, we do have a location, it's kind of circled in gray, which says existing paved area, which is going to be just in that parking lot area. That's to be used for the outside storage of the garden supply. So.
Yeah, okay.
I was talking, yeah, thank you. Yeah, perfect. I was talking to the client this evening about that. And I don't know if you've ever been to any of their other locations, but the South Windsor store, for example, way that they have it set up is it's, it's actually a pretty. way that they have it set up is it's, it's actually a pretty smooth flow, uh, where the customer knows that, you know, you have to pay for products inside, but then you can go pick up outside, or you can view outside and then come in and pay. Uh, but we expect that it'll be a quite a, uh, a, a pretty smooth flow or transition for the consumer to go from the store to that outdoor location. We're not sure what we're going to use that building for that exists there right now. That may be an extension of of the Lots and More, maybe a corporate store location, like an office. We're not sure. And of course, we would come before the board, uh, commission if we need to. Uh, but as it currently stands, that's going to be vacant, and so
Is that the old bike shop? Is that what we're talking about?
I think that is the, well, actually, yeah, if I, if I'm familiar enough with that, I believe that is. Right. And, and so the, the items that they're going to store out there are mostly going to be plants. We're talking, you know, perennials and annuals. Uh, there's going to be some nursery items, uh, probably, uh, less than more. But everything's going to be bagged and stacked, and it's going to be in a very neat, neat order, because of course, my clients got to make sure that they can protect the property as well, so that somebody can't just pull into the parking lot and drive off with a trunk full of mulch.
You don't plan
Has that been a problem, theft or anything?
Uh, pardon me?
Has, has theft been a problem at the other stores?
No, thankfully, it hasn't been.
Yeah, good. I imagine it's not, just curious.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Are there, are there any plans of having things like bird seed that rodents can get into or anything stored like that?
No, no current plans for that right now, and I think that's probably part of the consideration.
Is the bike shop part of that property?
You know, I, I, I don't want to misspeak, so I'm not sure if that is part of that property.
I was wondering about that. That's interesting.
Yeah, I'd have to pull up a GIS map myself to tell you the truth. I don't know if anybody, Katie, if you have any information on that. I don't, I don't believe so, though.
I don't believe so as well, Mike.
But that says 15 Phelps Way. Isn't that part of your? I don't know.
That is not
I only assumed it was, but now I'm wondering.
No, I don't, I don't believe so. I think that bike shop, it's not there now, or it is on a separate parcel, but correct me if I'm wrong, but there's nothing in that location right now, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, right, right. I say bike shop, that's what it used to be. That building, with a shared driveway, you would think that would be complicated.
Yeah, and that's, and that, uh, did come into play when we were talking whether they were 11 and 15 were in fact separately legal parcels. As we went back through doing this site plan and looking at the legal descriptions, in fact, it's been one parcel, considered one parcel for some time now. It's just nomenclature is, uh, keeping them separate, but, so because they are one parcel, we don't have any issues with regard to use instances.
Yeah, right, right, right. Interesting. Okay, thank you for that.
Sure. So unless you guys have any other questions, we, uh, I mean, we're certainly happy to answer anything else that you may have. We're excited to get going. As I said, that the client's purchased the property about six months ago. Obviously, everybody was thrown a couple curveballs by way of this pandemic, um, so we appreciate your efforts. And, and by the way, Mike, the model's been very helpful throughout the, the application process. Done a very good job, but, uh, so we are, we're excited to move forward. And we can rest unless you have any other questions.
Well, I'm going to open it up to the public in a second. You know, undoubtedly, it's a good thing to get some occupancy going on in that empty plaza again. So with that, uh, I'm going to open up to the public, you know, for any questions for you.
Okay, I'm
Go ahead, Ralph. I saw your hand up.
Well, I, Laurie had, uh, raised her hand, and as a member of the commission, I was going to let, give her first dibs, but um, if you just want to go to me, that's fine. I'm happy to talk. Uh, obviously, I've been in town before this place was even built, so, uh, I do know the history. Not, not in detail, but I know quite a bit about it. The bike shop was in the old Phelps home. That's what you are calling 15 Phelps, Phelps Way. That was a dry cleaner, it's a bike shop, and I think there's been a couple other activities in that building over the years. Just, just to clear up that issue, uh, the outside storage at that location, that's going to be quite removed from where the main store is going to be, is it not? It's essentially at the, uh, other end of the parking lot from where the store will be. So is there any intent to have personnel there, um, throughout opening hours? Is there any plan to fence in that area when it is used for outside storage? More as a, a, uh, discourage, to discourage any kind of, uh, theft? That's it for that aspect of it. I assume that Ms. Merrick owns the entire plaza. Is that a correct assumption? Anybody?
This for the internal, good?
Yeah, uh, yeah, BTV Real, uh, BTV Realty of Wellington LLC does own the entire plaza, correct? Yes.
Okay. There were some faults in the design of this building, in my opinion, as an engineer. It's a north-facing building, and it's really problematic in the wintertime, and I hope that, uh, Ms. Merrick is aware of this. Snow mouth off the roof is difficult to manage. Uh, it typically overflows the gutters. The gutters get iced up. And in front of the post office and Wellington Pizza and some of the, uh, couple of the units on the, I can't see North Arrow on the map I'm looking at, but, um, on the east side, um, icing becomes a problem on the pavement. And I can see that as far as a building owner becoming a, a serious liability in the in the times, and not like this winter, but some winters when we do have a lot of, uh, snow. Snow melt off that roof can be problematic. We're talking about, uh, renting tools. Uh, I think some more detail on exactly what we're talking about there is in order, uh, for the commission's consideration. Uh, are we talking about gas engine-powered, uh, rental equipment, uh, that's going to require maintenance in-house? Uh, I think these are considerations as far as the use of that property. I'm not trying to discourage this. Please don't get me wrong. I'm just trying to bring up things that I see. Uh, one, one, one other thing, back to the outside storage. Is there any anticipation of temporary, uh, cover over goods stored outside? Plants, particularly when you're selling plants for, um, customers, uh, they don't do well in full sun. You can really fry them pretty good. Uh, I, I would, uh, ask, is there going to be any anticipation of some sort of temporary canopy to shade this stuff? I guess that's a lot to throw out, uh, from one person. When you did the parking tally, did, were those spaces for temporary storage included in that parking, total parking count? Or was that ignored? And not included in the 100 and some odd parking spaces you were talking about? And that's, that's the extent of my comments at this moment.
Hey, I can respond to some of those?
Go ahead.
With regard to the, uh, the comments, good comments about the, uh, the fact that it's, uh, north-facing, I suppose, and, and the issues with the gutters and the ice melting. That's one of the reasons why the client is, in fact, replacing the gutters right now. So hopefully, that's not going to be a major maintenance issue for them, but that's something that they are aware of. As far as the, uh, the coverage or cover over, um, the outdoor display items as well as a fence, I think that's something that, given the fact that, that Katie and Bill have, um, they've had one, two, three different locations, including Willimantic, which is in existence right now, uh, that have had outdoor storage areas. I expect that they probably will take whatever, um, within the, uh, permissible, whatever they're permitted to do within the town regs without asking for additional permission. I think that they'll do whatever they can to protect that. Obviously, these are, this is their merchandise, and they're certainly looking to safeguard it. And Katie, chime in if, at any point, if you have any additional comments, but um, I think the, the cover and the fence are probably items that may reveal themselves whether they're necessary or not. They do plan on having personnel, though, uh, that are going to monitor those items out there to make sure that theft and, and, and anything else that negative could happen to them. With regard to the renting of tools, uh, in equipment and machinery, um, I expect that there will be some items that may be guest-bought. Certainly no maintenance or repairs or anything would ever take place onsite. Um, and if, uh, if, and certainly they wouldn't be displaying those items, uh, or the equipment that would be for rent. Uh, if they need to, they can house those in the back of the property or keep it at different locations. Uh, so as people come in to rent items, they could, they could deliver them, uh, as appropriate, or they would certainly be, uh, not within the parking areas that the public, uh, sees in the front of the building. And I'm sorry, I forget that last question that you may have had. If there was an additional one, I'm not sure.
The count of parking unit spaces.
Okay. Uh, I, it, from, based on what I can tell, and I, um, I wasn't part of the actual site plan, uh, drafting, but from what I can tell, that was, uh, that was not included for that. However, I'll give the caveat that if, uh, the intent of is the, of the client is to occupy the building located at that site, 15 Phelps Way, then certainly they would need to make sure that they have adequate parking to, to facilitate whatever business is going to be there. And so if there's an outdoor display area there that takes away that parking, then they will have hamstrung them in their efforts to, to put something else there. So we would certainly work within the town regs are in that capacity.
So if I could just chime in, because I don't want to keep toggling back and forth so you guys can see each other. The site plan does show that they did not count that parking lot towards the parking calc. They also assume the use of that building, which they see, which they are calling around 1,100 square feet. They're assuming that used to be retail, so they are calling it an additional five spaces of required retail onsite, but they're not using that little parking area to count for spaces. So if they do occupy that building with the, with something like a retailer, an office, the parking calcs that you looked at earlier already accommodate that.
Thank you.
All right, Laura, you, you had a question earlier?
Um, I just, you know, I was looking at the minutes and everything earlier today, which I know is later, and I did not find any of these documents. Um, were, were these sent out before this meeting?
The ones that, the ones that we had were, were, um, linked with the agenda. And then the additional documents that we reviewed earlier in the meeting, we didn't get until yesterday, so they and yesterday and this morning, Frank, really, so they didn't get emailed out, but what we had was.
Was it embedded in the email? Because I just, I just didn't see it, and that was my fault.
It was like the last agenda. If you're scrolling through, you'll see
Okay, thank you. That's all, that's all I had. Thank you.
All right, further public comment. Somebody needs to mute. Okay. Any, uh, any further comments from the commission or questions? Okay. I'm going to move to, I'm going to move to close the, uh, public hearing for PZ 20-1, Special Permit for Retail Trade.
Hold on one second. Let me just see. There's a couple of other people here. I just want to go through and make sure in case they want to unmute themselves. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through that. So I don't recognize some names. So if you have something to say, I'm gonna unmute you. You can remute yourself if you don't want to say anything. Okay, so they, they should be okay to say something if they are interested.
Hi, I'm Tenille. I'm here on behalf of
Your last name, please?
Uh, Tenille Waldo. W A L D O. Um, on behalf of Wellington Station, which is actually located right next door. We have, uh, where the River and Rail Diner is, um, and a construction. So, I mean, I just think, we think it's positive that they're advocating to put more businesses in there and to, you know, beef up the property.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? Yes, Ralph?
Oh, don't say it like that. I'm not trying to be a pain. I, I
Ralph, I love talking to you.
I would presume that, um, signage would be consistent with the current plaza, uh, just to maintain the unified theme throughout.
Oh, yeah, the sign regulations have, we have to make sure they're consistent.
Well, that, that's what I would expect. No, it's, the, the, the comments that I offer are, are meant to be constructive, not critical. I, I welcome this business. I think the plaza would, would benefit. I think that whole area of town would benefit, uh, by this. Uh, I certainly hope that the residents of our town will be, uh, very supportive and frequent this place. I think that's been the major issue with the grocery stores there, uh, was a, a lack of, um, lack of participation by the people who live in town. And hopefully, this business can, uh, do far better.
And hopefully, it draws more business into the existing ones as well.
Exactly. So I wish them well, and I hope that the commission, uh, keeps any, any, uh, additional requirements reasonable and within, um, the context of our regulations. That's all.
Thank you, Ralph. Further questions? Uh, yes, Bob?
My, just, I'd just like to make just one small comment concerning the, uh, house, uh, on the corner of 15. I would certainly, uh, hope that the owners would consider using that building and not, uh, eventually wanting to, uh, tear it down. It is, uh, part of that small village setting that, uh, we call West Wellington. And, uh, I guess, uh, my only comment, I just hope that they use it and not try to, uh, want to tear it down in a few years. And not just focus on the, uh, main, uh, retail area there. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Further comments or questions? Okay. I'm going to move to close the, uh, public hearing, PZ-20-1, Special Permit for Retail Trade. Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Public hearing is, uh, is closed. All right, new business. Z-20-30, Special Permit for Home Occupation, Section 11.01.02, 54 Baxter Road, Owner, Applicant Allison La Prad. Do we see any reason we can't move on this one tonight? Go ahead, Laurie.
I move that we approve that this special permit.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's, uh, it's approved. Congratulations, uh, Allison.
Oh, thank you so much, guys.
Hopefully, it does well. Hopefully it does well.
Oh, I hope so.
All right, other new business, PZ dash 20 dash one, special permit for retail trade. Section 5, point oh four, point oh one, point oh two, point one nine. 11 Phelps Way, owner BTV Realty of Wellington, applicant Katie Merrick. How's the commission feel about this one tonight as far as, uh, moving on it?
I think we should move on it.
Yeah, I have no problem moving on it.
I, I agree. Anybody disagree?
I have a th- couple of thoughts for the commission, just, uh, considerations.
Go ahead.
One, you know, if you're considering potentially like a conditional approval, three things that came up. Relates to outdoor storage and that it be limited to the area depicted on the site plan, specifically behind the building, uh, number 15. That, um, no repair or maintenance of any rental equipment, uh, shall be performed onsite. And storage of that equipment should be, well, you, I'm thinking maybe you want to consider where that equipment be stored, whether that be. Um, you know, in a specific area on the site, potentially behind the big building so that it's out of sight. Um, that, that might be something, uh, accessory outside storage is an allowable accessory use in this zone. Um, so the, the landscaping materials and stuff all fits within that and is, that's something you guys can look at, but. Uh, I don't know the number of vehicle or pieces of equipment they intend to rent, and I wouldn't want. There to be a line of, of, uh. Bobcats and, and other things, uh, along that plaza. The only other thing I would consider is that any lighting upgrades be dark skies compliant.
I would go along with those. Those are good suggestions. Thank you, Mike.
Very good suggestions, but, uh, any, like a lighting upgrade would have to come back before you anyway, correct, Mike?
If they were going to simply swap out some bulbs that, and keep all the lighting the same, but maybe go from. Halogen LED or something, that wouldn't, we wouldn't see that. Um, so I think that, you know. It would, we saw like the Parks and Rec app because they were installing new lighting and new additional poles. Or increasing heights like at FedEx, but if they're simply swapping out bulbs, we might not see it. So I think. It doesn't hurt to, to put it on there that, uh, just so that, that we're making them aware.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't want to delay this, but I do think we need a little bit of time to craft, uh. Proper and intelligent motion that we can all agree on. Um. Can we try to start writing one right now or?
I'm, I'm up for that if we can do it.
Yeah, of course we can. Um.
All right, Andy, you, you sound like you volunteered.
I'm volunteering. Just give me a moment.
You want me to do it on the screen here?
No, what? That probably would be fastest, Mike. We can, we've done it before and it worked out pretty well.
Okay, let me, uh.
Well, it's not that. I don't want to be obstructionist, but we do want to get it right. And I actually. I have a good story about a motion that we made back in 2006 that's causing. A landowner some problems today. So we have to be careful how we craft these.
Agreed.
All right, give me one second. I'm going to pull up a. All right. Screen. Let me make it bigger.
I already recognize, I do have a question about, when we look at parking. We, I tend to think of the main park, but there's a, there's parking up by the Dana Woods section two, right? And that, is that, is that calculated separately for just that little part, part of the building? You know what I'm, you know what I'm saying?
Hold on.
The main part where. Santilli's was Willie Pizza Two, Helen's and all that is the big lot, but then up and back by Dana Woods' operation, there's a few spaces.
Can you see that?
Yeah.
Is that where you're talking about this big upper lot?
Yeah, the upper level. Is that part of the total calculation for parking spaces?
Yes, that is all calculated because, um, yeah, it's part of, it's all, uh, it is connected. So if you look at, see, if you can see in here, and you can't see my cursor, but I'm going to try to.
Like I said, I'm checking.
If you, so if you can see the 14, the 32, these numbers that are circled, those are parking counts.
Right. So that's calculated into the overall tendency of the entire building.
So that's in the 158?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Um. Just because you mentioned that we wouldn't want to see equipment out of sight, that doesn't seem to be, to the. Applicants benefit, one of the best advertising you see, a couple of bobcats on there says, rent me. So I, it doesn't seem logical that they would want to hide that.
Is, is, is that something that could be displayed under the canopy where the drive-through was for the bank?
Yeah, I was just sort of curious about it, that it seems like, I mean, if you look at Google Maps, it's that, that upper lot is rarely used. And nobody parks up there. I guess with a new storm over then, where it's going to be so busy, they're going to be fighting for a parking spot, but. I'm just thinking that in the interest of, of thinking like the customer. Um, you, you, you wouldn't want to hide those. But I love seeing equipment. That's just my nature, but, uh, you know, certainly. That's the best advertising to see a couple of mini excavators. And a skid steer out there that says, rent me. That's great stuff. That's what dollar rental companies do. They put it right in front of the building.
I'm thinking of like the True Value in Willimantic. When you ride by that, they usually have the equipment.
Right. They, they, they might be scattered all over the state, but at least they have a couple of representative pieces. So you know that it's real.
The rest of it's behind the fence there at their operation, but you know they have some things.
Yeah, right. I mean, I just, I don't want to make our, our motion restrictive, so. That wouldn't be something they could do because it would seem logical. They would wish to do that.
If, if you want to display bobcats and things like that. Wouldn't the best scenario be to, uh, display that over towards the area where they're going to have, uh, mulches and. Plants and such like that, visible, but not right in front of the, uh, large building?
I would think, yeah, I, I would think so, but I was even thinking that even if it was up in the back, I mean, people in Wellington, they're going to notice. People are going to notice, hey, I see some equipment back there that says, rent me. They're going to figure it out soon enough, but if it's like really hidden in the back where nobody ever drives. You can't see it from either, either road or through any season. I think that would be detrimental to their business. And I wouldn't want to craft a regulation that prevents or limits them. That's all.
Yeah, I think visibility is a good thing to a point, you know?
Yeah. Cool. That's all I'm thinking about. Thank you.
Mike, there we go. Okay.
Beautiful.
So no outdoor, okay, outdoor storages. We need, uh, one for, uh, no work on the, uh, rental equipment onsite, no maintenance, things of that nature.
What else did you include, Mike?
The lighting upgrade.
Oh, yeah.
The lighting upgrade, dark skies compliant if they do anything. Do we want to say anything in here about signage or is that going to be self-evident? Existing businesses, we want to call it? Okay.
So the only other question that I have as staff is we're still related to the, the, the rental equipment. I understand what everybody's saying about. Not wanting it to be detrimental and I agree. Right now, they are sitting in the front row of parking spaces and there's a sign related to, to being available for rent. Uh, I don't, I don't want the vehicles, the, or the equipment taking up parking spaces. Um, and, and this commission was very, very restrictive and I'm not, I, I think rightfully so with Dollar General in. Allowing them to display materials in front of their building. So I, I want to make sure, I think they should, should be outside, but, uh, but I think it should be clear that you guys should make, uh, it clear in the motion. Where you think it would be acceptable for those things to be, and you can decide wherever that is, but I think the motion should state. Um, because they don't really fall under outdoor storage. It's something a little bit different. Um, so I think you should state where you think that would be appropriate.
I don't remember that. What did we, what did we, that, that would be, you don't want to be inconsistent.
Dollar General was prohibited from any exterior, uh, outside storage in front of the building.
Hmm. Yeah, they couldn't roll anything out onto the sidewalk like they do in a lot of their, uh, sites.
They, they were diff- yeah.
It's similar to like when you say you walk into like a Ocean State job lot and they have all the plants and everything out in front of the building and everything.
I kept that, and that's really because their, the land, the property was rather restricted in size and traffic patterns, wasn't it? But I mean, that, that's kind of what I remember our concern was.
I believe that's true, yes.
Or was that, was it more just optical? Was it optics or was it safety related?
We just had a lot of issues with the parking lot at Dollar General and how they were even going to bring trucks in to, to bring it.
I, right, I think that was it, right?
Right.
If they put anything up front, it leaves no place for the people to be, except in the parking lot. Okay.
Except a lot of those stores.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Lori.
A lot of those stores, Lori Semperpan, they put, um. They put the stuff on the sidewalk, which doesn't affect the parking. And I think it would be a little bit of a double standard to allow them to have this equipment all over that parking lot. Um, I think it, and yes, they obviously want people to see it, but if people are coming in and out of there. They're going to see it if it's somewhere off to the side and people are going to know it's there. I, I don't think it should be right up front. Um, where you, you know, where that piece of equipment is now necessarily, because I think. That's the same concern. Once you start getting people in and out of there, you're taking up that parking area. And I think it should be a little bit more set back, maybe over towards the side. I'd have to look at the map again to be more specific, but, um.
Do you want me to pull it up?
How about, how about near fif- uh, 15 Phelps Way, near the bike shop where they wanted to put the mulch and everything too? Couldn't that be up in there somewhere?
Well, I'm, I'm wondering if the rental, uh, equipment, uh, can't be more related to. The outside storage in the garden area and maybe that could be their, I don't know. Again, I, I have no, we have no concept about how many, what type of equipment they're renting. Uh. Could that rental be associated with 15 and not with the main, uh, store?
I think we're all saying the same thing, Bob. That, that's, that's exactly what I'm thinking as well.
Right. That should be their rental shop, that little building there.
Right, but are you going, are you going to limit the equipment to the parking spaces right? Next to that building or in the, where you see it as you're coming down 74? I just, I think it. I don't know. I don't know what people think about that.
Yeah, that, I'm, I'm guessing that road around the back is probably fire access as well, right? I don't know that, but I would assume that. I, I would expect that's a fire lane.
Well, you've got propane tanks back there. You've got things like that.
How about the area, that grassy area right next to the parking, uh, spaces for the, uh, 15?
I'd, I'd almost rather see some process put down and park stuff over there.
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't mind that. And it's certainly, it's certainly noticeable once you pull into the parking lot. You know, it's, it's out in the open that the, that equipment could be seen quite easily.
Yep. And people that are looking for it, their eyes are going to be drawn to it and the people that aren't interested won't even see it. So if our motion, again, Mike, can you highlight the, the existing area to use for outside garden area? If we, you know, can we in our motion, if we sort of crafted language to say. That the area bordered by this, so we include, uh, the grassy area, we include, I mean, if they want to, you know, if they wanted to do a little rain clearing and a little. Re- landscaping and they find that they need the extra room, right now it says in that parking area, but. Maybe to, to try to broaden it and keep in harmony with, with, uh, what we want for. Optics and traffic flow and stuff and then. Know what I'm saying?
I don't have a problem with that.
Right now we say parking, you know, and it really, it doesn't really encompass the grass and it, just so we recognize that. Something like that. Yeah. And if, if, if grass became processed down, that wouldn't, wouldn't give me any heartache. That seems to be cool. Um, the only other thing that occurred to me, and I, I, I kind of wish I'd asked this question in the public hearing, but of course, it didn't occur to me. I expect that there will be deliveries here and there's no real loading dock. If you've got, I don't know how, how Watson Moore works, but if you got a four tractor trailer loads of mulch because you got a bargain on it. And you ran out of room. Where are they going to put the overflow? At the other stores? It's kind of a question for the applicant. We can't ask it. There's something that. Um. And that's why I was asking about that upper level. That was included in the parking. Even though few people park there these days, but hopefully more people will have to park there because it'll be so busy. Because that would kind of be a cool place to put stuff, but. Like on the map, it's, there, there's not even lines on it. It hasn't been used in so long.
I see they highlighted loading dock. Hey, what, what's that for?
Yeah, there's a, there's a loading dock in the, there's a loading dock in the back.
There is, but it doesn't, it wouldn't be for tractor trailers, would it? It'd look big enough. Yeah, maybe. What do I know? Okay, so there's a loading dock. I'm thinking they're probably going to have a forklift that they're moving mulch and everything, so that's. No worries. I got no, no problem with any of it. I think it's great. Love to see it. I'm glad we got a tenant in there that, that cares about the building. We haven't had that in a while. I'm sure they'll take good care of it. That's all I got. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
So where? Yeah, the, these are great ideas. Um, so where that tractor actually is now, it would not be allowed to be.
No.
If we pass this permit. Okay.
That's how I read it.
Okay.
Andy, are you gonna make the motion?
For, for, let me read this in a minute. If I move to approve, PZ 20 dash one, special permit for retail trade, section 5040102.19, 11 Phelps's Way owner, BTV Realty of Wellington, applicant Katie Merrick, with following conditions. One, outdoor storage of garden supplies shall be limited to the area specifically depicted on the submitted site plan. Two, there shall be no repair or maintenance of equipment on site. Three, any lighting modifications shall be dark skies compliant or require separate approval from the commission. Four, new signage shall be in harmony with the existing onsite signage. Five, equipment rental storage displays shall be limited to the area designated as outside storage or the grassed area immediately, immediately to the south of number 15 Phelps's Way.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
Sweet.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you very much, everybody. Much appreciated. Excited to move on.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Have a good evening.
Much, yeah. Stay safe. Thank you.
All right, no unfinished business. F, the minutes of May 5, 2020. They're they're pretty extensive. So is everyone?
I have one, a couple of minor corrections.
Go ahead.
H10.
H10?
Yeah, where I was speaking. And again, these are minor, but it says lows of quarry renewal. That should be loves or acory renewal. And in the next sentence, five days is reasonable and considered should be five days is reasonable to consider. So those sentences just didn't make sense the way they were. I think people understand it, but I just saw that and they're minor.
Okay.
It's much better than the original.
Yeah, the original was just a draft. She sent it out by accident. I saw that. That couldn't have been easy taking those minutes. There was a lot of talking. So what do we want to do? Do we want to approve them at the next meeting or do we want to approve them as?
No, I'll, I'll move to approve them with that minor amendment. Did you, it's on the recording, right? So Mike, you can get that.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, let's see what we have now. I turned around and I had the minutes in front of me, so I'm looking at last week's meeting. Got confused. All right, correspondence. Do you have anything, Mike?
No.
Okay, H, public comment. The commission will hear brief comments at this time from anyone wishing to speak. No business can be conducted here, nor can any comments be made about any items on the agenda. So do we have anyone out there wants to comment?
I want to say one thing briefly. I mentioned it earlier, that back in the Sandy. I don't know who's on the commission in 2006 besides me. Was there anybody brought the urine on you in 2006?
Not yet. I came a little after that.
We, the oldage provided up some properties, personal property, they divided it into three building lots because they were anticipating, you know, you know, they ended, end of days and stuff, so they wanted to pass it on to their kids. And we put in the motion that the straight, we were, we were concerned that they might be flipping it. So we tried to craft part of the motion, so it was clear that it couldn't be flipped. But unfortunately, the first sentence is a transfer of our land in the subdivision shall be to a parent, child, brother, sister, grandparent, grandchild, so on. So now that the, you know, this was 2006, the land was subdivided, nothing went into the deed. But now the attorneys, the woman who wants to settle it, Holly Eldridge, is now their attorney came back and said, well, your motion says that this can only go to a parent, child. I said, wait a minute, that is confusing. You know, we, we thought we were protecting the town from someone just avoiding open space requirements. But we actually sort of made it difficult for the landowner, you know, years after the fact. I'll show it to you when we're all together sometime. But I thought it'd be interesting that even the best of intentions and emotion can cause problems as we go downstream. So I think, I think what we're doing, we did it with we did it with loves and we did it, I really kind of like doing it on screen. We get it out there. We're all talking about it. If we couldn't come to an agreement that night, we could table it, do it the next meeting. But at least we're transparent, very clear what our thought process is. So I think even when we're all together again, I, I would encourage that, that sort of big screen motion right up front, get it in writing, so we have a chance to digest it. And I don't think we should be, even though I know we're trying to always accommodate the customer, and I think that's a great posture. I think we also need to, if we have to, you know, tap the brakes a bit and and wait for another two weeks or so, I don't think that's necessarily wrong in the long term, like with the case of this. Now, if we had taken a little more time in '06, this person wouldn't be having a discussion with their attorney. So that's all. Thank you.
No, thank you, Andy. All right, staff report and discussion.
I don't, I don't have anything other than I was at the board of finance meeting last week and I, it appears that they are going to move forward with our, our zero budget, zero increased budget. So they didn't go with the negative three. So just so that you're all aware, there's the process isn't over, but looks like that's what they're gonna do.
Okay.
What does that mean?
And actually, well, actually I have one other, so, yeah, Andy wasn't here for the last discussion. Basically, there were a couple of items that we needed, that we reduced. One of them was related to GIS projects. And the other was zoning regulation revisions. There were two line items that gave the commission the ability if they wanted to, if they wanted to consider something and they need mapping done, or if you guys wanted to do a reg revision and, you know, wanted public input or wanted to have a charrette or something, the line items in that but would accommodate that. We've had to cut them back pretty significantly to get to that because so much of our budget is fixed related to advertising and and essentially salary. We're at like almost 90%. So so we're basically limited in cutting those. They're not at zero though, so we do have some left. The other thing that I, I did want to mention, because and we're, we're set to go live soon. We have a GIS, which is online. We've used it during the meetings. It's accessible to anybody with an internet connection through the website, and it shows wetlands and it shows property ownership and zones and topography. What we have been working on in lieu of COVID and the town hall being closed is taking the town's laser feast, laser fish system, which is our, the land use department uses that. All of our documents are digital. So we don't have paper files. So we are now going to be projecting those property files through the GIS system. So when you click on a property, you will then get a link to the documents and you will be able to go through a PDF of all of the documents that the building, planning, zoning, ZBA, wetlands have on file. So it'll be available to the public because people, they can't do title searches. They can't see what permits they have on a house they want to buy. There's a lot of issues with them not being able to access the information we have because the town hall is closed. And we, we've been working with our vendor and have come up with a really inexpensive way to do it. So it's going to be hosted on the website and that will be available to everybody, probably in the next two weeks.
Nice.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, yeah, it's all, it'll be, it'll be anything. A lot of people want to know who, who built their house and when it was built. And if they do title searches, they want to know, you know, different things related to appraisals. And so the challenge we have is our offices are open kind of funky hours when we are open, nine to two, for example, or 12 to seven. And now being closed, it's a phone call trying to reach someone, hey, I need this file. Okay, we'll look at it. We'll try to email it. A weight, it's too big. I can't email it. We'll break it up. It's very cumbersome. So now people will be able to to hit all that right from home.
You should have built some money in for zoning enforcement. So you're gonna find an awful lot of people spying on their neighbors saying, hey, somebody built something. I don't see a zoning thing on. I don't see the rent before the commission. Better go out there and look at it.
That, I mean, hopefully that's not what it's used for, although you never know. But so I'll just give you a, a quick idea. I will show you this just because so that you can kind of help spread the word once it goes live. But basically, this is through the town's GIS. Hopefully you can all see the screen. That this is, you know, so you're, you're looking at everything here. So you'd click on the property. This, this is because it's in beta testing, but essentially you'd click this. And what would happen is you then can see the files here. And so then what you do is you'd click on this link for building and it will load all of the, everything that's been scanned. Now, this has been 15 years of a program, so any number of things could be in here. I didn't scan all these, but the idea is if the town has something related to your property, you can see it in a PDF and and you can look at it and read it, pump slips and and everything else. So we're trying to bring this information to to the people.
Wow, that's cool.
That's all I got.
All right, it's 8:52 PM. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.